Hey Tim.
Hello. Finding the mute button the first time.
Yeah, it's always tricky.
Exactly.
Looks like.
And you guys were live, just so that you're aware.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi Kim, this is Taylor Walton, can you hear me?
I can hear you just fine.
Okay, great, thanks.
Hi Wes.
I am here.
Hello everyone, for that matter.
Hi Barry.
Even had to cut my fishing trip short to get here.
Oh man, that stinks.
And we are live, just so you guys are aware.
Okay.
You're on mute Rob.
Thanks. Hey, it's six o'clock, are we ready?
We are ready.
Great, let's do it. Starting out the pledge of allegiance. Commissioner Walton, are you able to do that?
No problem, you'll just have to take my word for it that I'm standing.
I take that, I'll take your word.
Alright, please repeat the pledge allegiance after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is, I need to read the order on public meetings of the South Weaver City Plan Commission. Please bear with me, I, Robert Osborne, is the Chair of the South Weaver City Planning Commission, do hereby find and declares follows, due to the emergency conditions which currently exist in the state of Utah and specifically Davis County and South Weaver City as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and the recent surge in COVID-19 infections across the state and in Davis County, the holding of public meetings with an anchor location is defined in the Utah Open and Public Meetings Act present a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present at the anchor location and two, the risk of those who may be present at the anchor location can be substantially mitigated by holding public meetings of the planning commission pursuant to electronic means that allow for public participation by virtual means and three, the city has the means and excuse me, means and ability to allow virtual participation in electronic meetings in accordance with the Utah Open and Public Means Act, now therefore based upon foregoing for thirty days from the day of this order, meetings of the South Weaver City Plan Commission shall be conducted by virtual means without an anchor location dated the twenty-sixth of August, 2020. Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda, preliminary action. Action and preliminary site plan improvements for the loss approximately 3.21 acres located approximately seventy-eight, seventy south, twenty-seven hundred east by developer Joseph M. Cook of Deer Run Investments. I've seen the new drawing and I gotta say, I'm pretty impressed. I like what I see.
Well, we're trying to make a good faith effort to make this thing a really nice project and again, thanks so much for being here everyone tonight. So appreciate your time and hopefully we can make this a quick meeting but so everyone can get back to you know, whatever they like doing, getting back to your fishing or whatever but I know, I think Leland, thanks to Leland for busting that out really fast and giving us a really good look at what we think we can accomplish. I don't know if anyone has it in front of them, I might be able to screen share. Maybe not, but if everyone has it in front of them, I think we tried to go down the list of items that we discussed last week and kind of talk about each one of those and we've moved the buildings back and away from the road so they won't, and dropped them down about fifteen feet, so the foundations are now sitting basically, I think they're within four to six feet of native soil and
Mr. Cook, can I interrupt you for a second?
Yeah.
Kim, if we could get Mr. Cook the ability to share a screen, I think it would be good for the YouTube.
I've already done that.
Okay.
Okay.
I was gonna tell him when he was done talking.
I just interrupted, so.
Oh yeah, no, appreciate it. So this is the new site plan and what we've done is, right now it has a hundred and forty-seven parking stalls and sixty-five residential stall units and so we've decreased, we've gone from seventy-two number down to sixty-five and we've basically have taken kind of the same floor plan that was in building A and been able to bring it over here to buildings B and C. Hundred and forty-seven parking stalls, we've got a really large circular area here for for the traffic flow, for people coming in and out and dropping off their children. This is a thirty-six foot wide, so that the red dotted area signifies, I think fire, correct me if I'm wrong, Leland, a fire access where it should be proper for a fire apparatus to get in and out, but you can see it's five feet on either side, so it's actually thirty-six feet wide here closest to the building like was requested. These buildings are set down, there's a little retaining wall, I think it's between four to six feet back here and what we've done is tried to create, like we talked about last time, is a paseo, I looked up the definition of paseo and it basically means a leisurely walk in Spanish and so we've tried to create this leisurely walk where people can go spill out of their units and kind of come along the canal and reconnect back up and through the community and back around or whatever, maybe like a little jogging path, we've set out park benches and barbecues. We think we have a playground here. We've got a community pool here with a kind of a picnic area, maybe a pergola or a pavilion. One of the requests was for arcades and I looked that up, arcade is basically a covered walkway and so we've got a little arcade connecting these two buildings here, thinking about maybe doing one right through here as people drop off and the main entrance of this building would be covered potentially. So we've got the thirty-six inch wide and so these buildings here, instead of having those massive fourteen-foot retaining walls, these buildings become the retaining wall and we'll talk about the facade, I guess probably in a little bit, but now the facade, the nice part of the facade is facing to the back, to the neighbors, they're gonna see a, you know, a first-class elevation when they look at these buildings from across the canal and across the road. They'll see the money side, I guess, both sides will have decor on it of course, but this is really the money side here, I would think. And that's what's gonna be facing the neighbors to the west.
Hey Joseph?
Yeah.
Could you explain, I'm seeing some parking that I'm assuming is under buildings B and C?
Yeah, so.
Explain how that works.
Okay, so, and Leland, jump in and correct me if I'm wrong, but we come in here and you, basically instead of having three full floors, you'd have two here, the very bottom floor being the parking garage, so you'd have covered parking underneath the building for for this side here and then they could walk straight out of the parking garage into level one and then over here on the surface parking, you could walk straight into the building on level two and then go up basically one flight of stairs to get to the third floor units, so you drive in here, everyone have a reserved covered stall under the building and they can walk straight into the building from their parking stalls. And then from here, you can walk in and park and walk straight into the building on the second level and then up one floor to get to the third floor. And so it's really, it's really, Leland did a great job and came up with this idea and it's, I think it's really, really efficient and easy for people to enter and exit the building by foot from their parking. So, I think it worked really well.
Elevationally, those have to be, are they one way in, one way out, there's no connection over to any of the other parking or?
No, it's just a parking garage.
Okay, alright.
So these here would come into the parking garage and then they would back out and come right back out, so it's not designed as a fire lane or anything or a, you know, part of this circular loop for the fire trucks.
Right, is that, is the parking area then that's just south of, we'll call it building C, I guess?
Right here?
Yeah, that area, is that raised up to the level of, tell us about elevation on that part?
I don't know, I think it's got a retaining wall right here, Leland, do you have, I'm not sure what he has as far as elevation goes on that one, but I believe it is elevated somewhat.
Okay.
Let me just say, that area is is connected with the higher elevation, it does slope, but we get two levels of wall right there, we got a lower wall there at the canal, about six feet high and then we've got an upper wall that takes you the rest of the distance up there, which is about eight feet high.
So this is the lower wall here, Leland?
Yes.
It's good, and it ranges between four to six feet tall? And this one's eight feet?
It's eight feet on the south end, or on that west end and then it gets better as it goes towards the street.
So it levels up this way?
Yeah.
So, I think, let me look at the, some of the other.
We still have, what's the distance, is it still the same, Leland, on that that upper retaining wall, is it the same distance from the property line as it was before?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Eighteen feet to the wall, twenty feet to the curb.
Alright.
So, in the CO zone, it's ten point five and point one-one and I think the key elements that were discussed in the last meeting were one, eight and nine but a lot of those things are nine and as far as the site plan goes, paseo, I think we've created kind of a cool walking path through the, through the development. People can walk through the building and especially the main floor occupants can come straight out of their unit and ride onto this paseo that loops them around. We've got a couple of courtyards here, I think this one is really nice feature with a pavilion and a swimming pool and one right here that would be a nice area for a playground and barbecue pits and that sort of thing. So so those are kind of the plazas and courtyards that we've kind of come up with. And lighting is yet to be determined, but we'd have, you know, probably pole lighting in various places and structure mounted lights so that people would have proper lighting as they're walking around and so it's not dark in the project. So, number six on your list from last meeting was reduce the number of residential units and we have complied with that, we've gone down to sixty-five, we've, I think the demand on parking has gone down because of the reduction in commercial has gone down, I think about fifty percent on the shared, on the shared side, I believe that's about what it's at. Let's see. So, this number, just referring to number four on your list from last week, dispersed the fourteen-foot retaining wall, I think that's been pretty well accomplished here, it doesn't appear there's a retaining wall of much magnitude over here but there seems to be one here, but the building itself becomes the retaining wall in this design where, you know, you've got a building that's retaining the parking garage and it's really hidden at this point and you've got the elevation you know, facing some of the neighbors that are on the west side. Over here, it's a little taller, but I think this is a really good compromise as far as retaining walls go for number four. On number five, we did eliminate commercial buildings B and C which used to be here and here. And we did a couple of studies, Fred and I, as far as trying to do, make the architecture all the way around look appealing and so, I don't know if you want to move on to architecture, but that's, I know that was a big concern of the planning commission last week and so, a couple weeks ago. But let me just finish up some of these other, you know, bullet points, but number nine, detention basin be some form of mowable grass and so I think that's something we can definitely agree to put in the landscaping plan and in the develop, you know, if there's a revised development agreement or something like that, so that's, that's not, that's not no problem at all. Number ten, the detention basin to include a liner in the bottom and the sides to protect the neighbors to the west and that's, that's not a problem at all. Show the fencing of the Davis and Weaver Canal, Leland, do you know, isn't the fencing just right on the property line?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so that would be where the green area stops along the back of the property?
Yes, along the top of the wall.
Okay, so, we actually have quite a bit of space between our property line and the actual canal as you can see on the map, it's not, it's not close to our property, but it does create a really good ambiance as far as open space goes. There is quite a bit of, you'd have a really big feel of having an open area for these residents. So, I think we sent you the updated title report and the current recorded surveys and so those should be, if they haven't been distributed to you in the near future. And I haven't been able to get ahold of our attorney to address the CCNR thing, but anyway, that's something we can discuss. Is there anybody that have any questions or comments on the site plan that's been proposed, the revision? Before we kind of move on to architectural possibly?
I think that's a good idea, Joe, is let's, if the commission has any more questions on the, on the design, the architect, or the the site plan and yeah, we'll go on to the architectural look. Is anybody else got a comment?
I just, I have a question. On buildings B and C, where it's showing the parking stalls, it's also showing some green space, some landscaping and sidewalk and I'm trying to figure out how that works, what's happening there? Can you explain that?
Talking about, go ahead, Leland.
Yeah, so, that parking area is underneath that landscaping and sidewalk.
Okay, so you actually have landscaping on top of structure there?
Yes.
Okay.
Anybody else?
I just want to say, this to me looks much more livable than the previous plan. I just, it feels like something that the residents will appreciate much more. They'll have, you know, a better situation, they'll have places to walk. They're back further off the street. I think the parking is going to be a little bit more convenient to the dwelling units. And there's, there's more places for them to recreate, I mean, there's a pool, there's amenities that weren't in the previous version of this. I think it's gonna be a lot more livable and looking at, we haven't looked at the the architecture yet, the elevations, but personally, I like the way you're, the direction you're going much better than the other one. I think it's going to fit, has a better fit or field for the community.
I think so, I think getting that building off the stilts and down onto the ground where the people can walk straight out of the buildings, out of their patios, I think is gonna be a benefit.
Yeah. Yeah.
I agree, I think, I think this, this looks more of what South Weaver should be. So I, this kind of look, I think you're gonna be able to get more per dollar, per unit, I just, I just think it's going to be more appealing. So I appreciate that.
So, Rob, I did have a question and I don't really know if it fits in the conversation about the architectural elevations or at this point, but I just, I want to get a sense from, from the developer here on what their concept is of the residents that would live on the upper floors and their view to the west. Are they gonna be like looking right down into people's yards? Or is there, I guess I'm asking their opinion on this, like I'm having a tough time conceptualizing just how that looks from that vantage point.
Leland can give you, I think, really good numbers as far as the outline of where the residents live but on the, to the south, you've only got, you've got one neighbor right here, it's got, I think, an eighty-foot and of course this line here, but eighty-foot here and this one's got about fifteen feet, but to the west just to get to the canal, we're probably looking at something like eighty feet to get to just the canal and then over here, on the other side of the canal, you've got, it's a very large easement and Leland probably has better numbers there, but it's, and not only that, but on the other side of the canal, there's a road and the residents are really, there's lots and then there's a road, there's no houses right directly to the west. There's a road across the street and there's lots of trees and so there's not, except for to the north where the neighbor is located, there aren't really close by neighbors, but Leland can probably give you some better, better numbers as to how many feet away they are. I think they're in this number a hundred feet away.
Just, just one quick comment, this is Fred Cox. When we went from five, well, when we went from a building D and E to a building D, we originally didn't have any balconies on the west side, we had everything facing the mountains but when we combined those two buildings, we did put balconies on the west side and even though the building is closer as far as being able to look into somebody's yard or primarily just look down to that street down there, there's really not a it's not any worse or better than what it was, other than we've used the buildings to terrace and instead of looking at a fourteen-foot high wall, you're looking at the required six foot and so, I don't know that it's any better or worse as far as anybody going out to their balcony and, and looking out and seeing, you know, who's parked down on that street, but I, I don't know that we're making it any worse by what we're proposing.
No, I appreciate that insight, because I think in our last meeting, you had mentioned that the visual impacts were more focused towards that eastern part of the development. I appreciated your candor on that and I just, I'd ask at this go around where you thought the visual impacts might be. And on a site plan question, I'm also curious about the most northern entrance into the development, I think you probably already covered it, I think I might have missed it, but if you enter that most northern entrance, that, that's the entrance that will take you into the underground parking, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Let me just address the question about looking down into people's backyards. That building A, which is the southernmost one, it has two stories above ground there at the street and it is, as far as view goes, roughly on par with the home that is directly west of it on Deer Run. Roughly on par, within five feet one way or the other. That home, of course, in the backyard drops twenty to thirty feet, so they are definitely looking down on, on that backyard. However, that backyard's also full of trees. Then the other buildings, as far as looking down on the homes across the canal, those homes across the canal are about six, are about two hundred feet away. And this is a three-story building, so this would be roughly equivalent to your neighbor two houses away having a three-story home while you've got a two-story home. That, just to give it some kind of relatable perspective.
Alright, I appreciate that. I guess, I think that answers kind of my follow-on question too, like we talked about the view coming from the development out, what about the development, outside the development looking up towards the east? I think she kind of answered that, so. Thank you.
Thanks Taylor. I'd like to, I'd like to, it doesn't sound like the commission has any more questions on the site plan. I'd like to move to the architectural look, Joe, if that's possible.
Sure. Let me, let me see if I can pull up the the drawings that we submitted. Let's see.
You'll have to stop sharing once you find it and then reshare.
Okay. Are we, are we still sharing or what are we doing?
You're still sharing.
Okay.
Wait, you're sharing the site plan?
Yeah, let's see here. Oh, am I sharing the site plan? Okay. Let me.
Yeah, you have to stop sharing the site plan and then, and then turn the share back on.
Okay, let's see. Alright, and then do I, do I stop, do I stop, press pause, share?
Just stop, share.
Did that work? There we go, alright, okay. Let me pull that up real quick. So, some of the drawings that we worked on, there's a, there's a place in Florida on the Emerald Coast that has, that uses a bunch of these gables and hip roofs and parapets and that sort of thing, we kind of drew something that would resemble that, it's kind of, I don't know if anybody's been to like an Ivy League school, got some of these parapets, BYU just tore down Deseret Towers and has utilizing a bunch of these in their new housing facilities. And so that's, this is one thing where we would just repeat this pattern, maybe something like this, so each section can be, we can find a different roof line for each section, so we've got maybe a, an area here with a parapet that has a hip roof, then an area here that has a gable and a parapet of different nature, so as you go down, each, each roof line can be sectioned off potentially into kind of a unique roof line, so it looks like maybe an east coast or something like that feel where it's instead of, you know, just a cookie cutter, boom, 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 all the way down, it's the, potentially the roof could shift from, from section to section of the building. And so, this is one idea, another one we worked on is just some other ones, gables and some shed roofs and that sort of thing. Place we used, I used to work in Florida had some towers and that sort of thing. But. But anyway, I think I, I, I kind of like this right here, this idea. I think we have a little work to do down here to kind of break that, set those sections up down along the storefronts and kind of make them a little more unique as you go through. But it would incorporate, you know, overhangs and some, some more like here in this one, for instance, it would incorporate more of a beam, you know, feel like a, like a solid, you know, wood beam. So you're kind of have that kind of more Alpine feel and, and overhangs and that sort of thing. And maybe some shed roofs and some little balconies and that sort of thing. But as you, you can see what we're trying to get at is, is something where it's sectioned, where this section is unique to the next section next to it. And the next section is unique to that one. And then it can, maybe it can repeat. We do three unique sections and then just repeat them or something like that. So they're, they look like individual homes with their own unique identity.
Sure.
And so this, this is just kind of a thing we threw together on the end, just to try to break up the wall a little bit, but anyway.
I gotta ask, cause it just, it just, it was just weird to me. What's that thing on the roof?
It's a chimney, just a chimney. It's a.
Wow, there's a fire coming out. That's pretty cool.
Yeah. I mean, this is, you know, there's quite a bit of, so this is that, that house right here that we kind of looked at right there. It's got, you know, these overhangs and supports and that sort of thing. And this is, this is a different, different view of that same house.
All right.
You know what I mean? So, but with this kind of building, it's, it's, it's a lot of repeating, but I think we can make it. I think we can, we can take that roof and really do something nice to where it looks like a, kind of a, a cityscape, but, but we're different, unique, you know, roof line to each building.
And you could do a lot with colors too with, with.
Right. Right.
Cool. Any thoughts, commission, anybody?
I guess the tower would be a good place for pigeons.
Got any homing pigeons?
Yeah, this is Tim. Hey, Joseph, I appreciate you guys making this effort and I was probably pretty hard on you as far as some of the things that have been presented earlier. And I appreciate the efforts you guys are going through and working with the existing land and terracing where possible and, and building into the land instead of just shaving it and building it up into one level. So I appreciate what you're doing here. I do like the architecture. That first sheet looks nice. I don't know that I'm a big fan of the tower, but I, I like the individuality of each, you know, unit and give them a personality. So it can feel more homey to the residents that live there and those that look at it from afar. I do agree. Yeah. The storefront needs a little bit of work there. And so looks good to me. I appreciate the downsizing the number of units, you know, so if we're dealing with a maximum of 65 units, I think that's great. We've downsizing the commercial space to the 15,500, 15,451. That's awesome. You know, we'll look forward to landscaping plans, especially along some of those walls now that those walls have been broken up. If you're able to landscape with plantings along those walls, I think it'll be awesome with that walkways and those benches. That all looks really good. Still would expect that you'll do some sort of short walls to shield the headlights and we'll get into that with the later reviews. And then, and then I appreciate you working on the finishes on all four sides of these buildings. They're completed and finished at a high quality on all four sides.
Yeah, I think that's, that's going to be something we do. We just need to select kind of a motif that we're going to go with and, and bring it all the way around the building.
Yeah. And I think, you know, and then we can review those covenants when you're able to get with your attorney and, and put those together. I think the only other comment I had is just on your title report. Just make sure you get your taxes paid on the property. So.
Yeah.
So that when we record the subdivision, it doesn't get unwound.
Oh yeah, they won't. Yeah. They won't, they won't record it unless we pay. So.
Right. So, but I think that's about the only things I noted. So I appreciate it.
So Tim, can I piggyback off of one of the things that you just mentioned? The, you called them knee walls, right? To the lights. Right?
To block the lights from the parking?
Yeah. I, I guess I just need to know where you're referencing that because I think my question is along those same lines, but I, I just want to make sure. Are you talking about the lights that could be coming out from the parking structure?
I'm talking about. I'm talking about the lights from headlights that they had on the original plans and I assume they'll, they'll take into account on the new plans that they'll be watching where those headlights are going and being able to block those. As far as the lights in the buildings and the garages, that's all going to have to be, you know, your down light type of a situation.
And I guess where I was going with the question too was, is I don't quite, I, I'm in a disadvantage tonight, so I apologize, but looking at the elevations on the west side, is there conceptually some kind of natural light that will come in, into the parking structure? Or is that, or am I misreading that?
Probably from the ends.
Yeah.
I think, I think from the ends there will be. And also, I think also, you know, this electric light.
So, okay, I, I apologize. So on the west side, bottom floor, you will have units that are on the same level as the parking structure, correct?
Right.
Okay. I think that's what I was missing. I, I kind of conceptualized something different in my mind where the entire bottom level was going to be parking and wondering if you're going to have any natural light from the west coming into the parking structure, but I'm clear on it now.
It's on a lower level, so.
It kind of looked like this.
Yeah, I apologize. I can't, I can't see what you're pointing at. I wasn't able to join. So I just have audio.
Okay. Yeah. But the, the parking garage will be on the same part, same level with the, the ground floor units.
Okay.
Maybe Taylor to answer your question. There is no natural light that's coming in from the west on that lowest parking level.
Yeah. I, I was just thinking about, you know, if somebody was pulling, pulling into a parking stall and their lights could shoot out across to the west. I, I've seen that done where you try to bring in some nice natural light and you end up having cars coming and going casting those headlights out over the surrounding community. So, no, I'm good. I'm clear now.
We do have some upper parking though, that we will have to watch headlights.
Yeah.
On, on that southern end of the site plan.
Right.
Yeah.
And you guys took that into account previously and we'll just expect you'll do the same.
Okay. Any other questions from the commission?
Is this something we, you could, this kind of motif here, something that is acceptable. I mean, we can proceed with kind of making a more fleshed out version of this.
I think so.
Okay. I think, but he showed on that first sheet and then some of the blue lining on some of the couple of the other sheets.
Yeah, right through here.
Yeah, combination. I think, I'm assuming Fred's the one that's doing that work and it, yeah, seems like, seems like he's on, you know, the right path and looks good.
All right.
So, yeah. Joe, what else you got?
So I, I just want to, I, I think parking is the last thing I think to discuss. We've drastically reduced our reliance on, on shared parking and under this configuration. And, you know, so I think we have 147 stalls and maybe Fred, it'd be better to talk about that, but I think, I think we've got a much easier. I think we're, we're, we're much improved on our, on our demand for parking in the current plan. So originally in the, in the, in the in the development agreement, we had 72 units and I think 32,000 square feet of commercial and 164 parking stalls. And now we've got about 15,000 square feet and 65 residential units and 147 parking stalls. So the demand's gone way down because you know, you no longer have the commercial, which is, which the commercial spaces is, is in the code. Two per thousand, I believe, plus one per employee. So you no longer have the two per thousand for the nearly 20,000 square feet there. And, and obviously none of the employees are going to be there either. So I think we've got a really good circular traffic pattern. And also a much reduced demand on that same parking and traffic pattern. So.
I, I think, I, from what I understand, the biggest concern in, in, in the community is, is that the parking doesn't spill over into other neighborhoods. And so I, I'm seeing 130 stalls for two cars for each resident. You know, that's leaving us what 17 stalls for, for the rest of it for visitors and for what happens at the daycare.
Yeah.
So I, I, I'm not the parking guy. So I'm, I'm guessing, I, I, I don't know if that's, if that's a good number. It feels like a good number to me, but I, I don't, I don't know. Yeah.
Yeah. I think we got a report back from the parking guy and basically you, I think he, he breaks it up in his studies to four time periods during the day and the, the, the demand is, is, these are empirical data that they, they studied daycare parking. And so with a shared parking, there's, we're never going to actually, based on the empirical data they've done on other projects, we're never going to reach, you know, capacity based on the time of day. And so I think it's all going to work out just fine. So.
Just put it another way. We kept the commercial by more than half and reduced the number of units by seven, while only losing 17 stalls. That's a pretty good improvement.
Right. And I know there's a formula to it and I'm, I mean, I'm only crude when it comes to, I'm taking 65 times two, it's 130. Okay. You know.
Yeah. And an important thing to note is these units are not all, they're not all two or three bedrooms. We've got, we've got one bedrooms. You know, we've got two bedrooms, we've got three bedrooms.
Right.
And so they're not potentially probably all going to be needing two cars and, and, you know, people come and go at different times of the day. So.
Sure.
Sure. Did you get the A01 site plan? Cause I did a parking ratio based on the former formula that Barry had given us before. I don't know if you've got that site plan or not.
The only site plan we got was the one he showed at the very beginning of that.
Okay. If, if you want to allow me to share a screen, I can show what that looks like as far as parking.
I think you should be able to.
Let's see. Let's try that one. Can you see that?
Yes.
Okay. So this is basically Leland's drawing. He's still working on it, but based on that and 147 parking spaces, I took the two cars per thousand for the residential. We now only have that roughly 19,000 square foot commercial building. And then you've got the area down in the basement for the residents. So that leaves 15,000 square feet. 15,451 square feet that could be leased out as far as commercial. And if you take that at two cars per thousand and you take into account that you're going to have at least 20 employees and you need 31 parking spaces based on the size of it. We actually have more shared parking available for residents or commercial or whatever than we had before. And the 132 is the minimum that we would need for the residential. But that, that 68 maximum shared is, is the number that I think will be very helpful because you've got a lot of parking spaces that are available for basically anybody. And at night where you don't have the commercial being used, it's available for, for your guests, et cetera. So it should actually work out better as far as guest parking. I've put that shared parking in the, in the commercial. But it's, it's not reserved and it's available for, for anybody. And so we've got enough to meet the employees. We've got enough for, for the service oriented businesses that we're putting in there and enough for the residential and that shared parking is going to basically move around.
And I like, got a quick, quick question on building A. It says 20 units on level two and three. Is that total or is that?
Yeah, that's, that's.
On each floor.
No, no, that's 20 total. So there's 10 units on, on each level. It's the same as what we had before. And then you've got building B. You've got, you've got two levels of, you can count the balconies, one, two, three, four, five. Anyway, you add those up and those, the total number of units per building. So the 20 units on building A, 25 on building C, three, four, five, and you'll end up with 20 on building B. And with that, it creates your, your 65 total. And with the, the formula that Barry had given us with, with a hundred percent of the parking available for residential at night and 20%, those numbers that he gave us, we can give you the spreadsheet back, but I used Barry's spreadsheet to generate this project summary. And up above, if you look at the overall numbers, we had 118,000. When we went from five buildings to four buildings, we had a total of around 118,000. We've got 91,000. So we've, we've taken out another large chunk of, of square footage. Again, trying to reduce the, the traffic demand and that was one of the things that we obviously heard.
Right.
And we got, we had three drives instead of just two. So.
Cool. Anybody else? I think someone else is piping in. Sorry.
I, I, I like the, the westernmost parking lot because it seems like that one is kind of reserved for that commercial area. You know what I mean? It look, it just feels like it's associated with building A. You know what I mean? Anyway.
Cool.
I do, I did. So the, the other issues on architectural, going back to the architectural, the other paragraphs that are relevant are paragraph one and two. Wherever practical building shall incorporate arcades, roofs, alcoves, porticoes and awnings that protect, protect pedestrians from rain and sun. And then the other one is trash storage areas mechanical must be screened from the street. So let's see. And then number seven, buildings shall provide a clear visual division between floors. Top floor of any building shall contain a distinctive finish consisting of roof cornice or other architectural termination. So those are kind of the things we tried to focus on architecturally. So.
Very good. So, so the next step, I, Joe is back to staff for all the, the fine details and then bring it in for the preliminary and let's, let's keep rolling. Is the way I'm seeing this go. It sounds like from what I'm seeing from the commission that and, and, well, I'm going to just say from my point of view, I, I appreciate the effort here as well. I, I think this is. And, and, well, I'm going to just say from my point of view, um, I, I appreciate um the effort here as well. I, I, I think this is. Uh, much better um project than what we've seen before. So thank you very much from, from both the architectural and, and the site plan look. So. I guess the next step is, is, is just run to the, let's get back to the staff and, and let's get all the uh Ts crossed and the Is dotted and, and go from there.
Can we get copies of uh those uh layouts? Ones that hadn't been sent out to us yet.
The, the site plan?
Yes.
Yeah, the one that he showed. Um, if you get it to me, I'll get it to the commission.
Sure. Did, I thought we had that to you, but yeah, we can send it to you right now. So.
Yeah, I got the first one that you showed, but, but haven't gotten the others yet.
The, the. Site plan.
I think it's the second site plan that he just showed um just, just a few seconds ago.
Oh, yeah, yeah, Fred's. Okay. Henry, Henry, are you try, I think you're trying to, you're on mute, so we can't hear anything you're saying.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, there you go.
Okay, so I guess my question is, we've been down this road with you all three or four times. Um, we've gone to staff, we get all this work done. We get to here and we're back to A again.
Yeah, we, I guess we just.
You, you all are okaying as long as we meet code with this design and this site plan. We're gonna, because see, now we got to go back to you that we're eating up another month going back to you. Then we got to go back to the uh final council. So, and, and we've been here already. I don't want to get back here again in a month and, and you guys changed the, the whole um game.
Yeah, it, it, we definitely need to have some sort of uh guide map like, like Tim did last time where we have these bullet points where it says, you know. A, B, C, D, whatever that we, as long as we comply with the code and, and the, the recommendations of planning commission. And Barry, maybe you can fill us in on exactly how we proceed.
Well, um, I was just wondering that myself. Actually, I, I, I think there's obviously a need to amend the development agreement. That's in place now. I'm just not sure exactly at what point we're going to do that. It, it, it sounds like we have a consensus amongst the planning commission that this is a direction that everybody's wants to see you go. I don't know if the council's going to want to see more before they're willing to um amend the development agreement or not. Um, Blair, you may want to, i- if you, if you have any kind of feel, then you might want to jump here and, and weigh in on that one. You, you know, this, the development, this development agreement has kind of set um. A standard in, in that they don't want to, the, the council does not want to approve development agreements until they've seen. A, a substantial plan to go along with it. And that's largely because of, of this development and that they entered into a development agreement very early on in this one and. And decided that that's not a direction they want to go from here on out. So I'm not sure what they want to see. I. Uh, that's probably the best method to, to give you guys assurance, the assurances that you want. Otherwise, you just have to take what you just heard tonight from the planning commission and, and take it on faith that they're going to. Allow you to move forward with it.
Well, the, I mean, why don't we just go through and say, um, you know.
I can't do a vote. I, I, that's illegal. I can't do that. It's not on the, not on here for.
I'm just saying, as long as we, we meet the uh updated, you know, architectural, you know, site plan and uh conformity with um. Uh, you know, the proposal.
I, I mean, I, I just, I just can't lock them into that, but I, I'm telling you, I, I, I think with the direction you're going is, is very positive. And um, I just can't tie their hands. That's all.
Well, I'm not trying to tie, no, we're not tying the city council's hand. The, the, the planning commission is to, their job is to recommend with conditions because it's a conditional use. I think that's. Uh, is to say, we recommend this site plan or whatever with X, Y, Z changes. You know what I mean? Uh, because it is a conditional use. You, you say, okay, yeah, this is good on the conditions that you, you know, you have this and you do the, the, the mode grass. And you have the architectural on fit, you know, page one or whatever, and the site plan that was submitted. The parking ratios that were submitted, the square footages that were submitted, those sort of things. And then we have the. Then, then I feel very comfortable going out and, and having all this sewer and water and engineering. You know, money expended, expended. Um, so.
Joe, Joe, I understand what you're saying. I, I do. I get it. Because you know, you, you're probably a ten thousand dollar deal or plus to do that.
Yeah, plus, yeah.
I get it. So the thing is, is I don't have it on my agenda. It hasn't been properly publicly noticed. For the planning commission to vote on a, a development agreement with this. That's.
No, 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 I'm just saying that uh in the development agreement, it would be something that would be. I, I don't think the planning commission uh has authority to approve the development agreement. I think it's city council.
Presentation to the city council, correct.
Yeah, I think that's what we're working on. I think we're trying to, Henry, I think it was his point is to make certain recommendations to the city council that they can say, okay. Do we like this? You know, that sort of thing. You know what I mean?
Right. So I, I, I guess in my. Because of the nature of the meetings and, and, and I'm not a pro at this. I'm just trying to figure this out, but. You want a development agreement in place with, between us and then onto the city council before.
No, 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 not a development agreement. No, just like we did last time with the, you know, the, the bullet point.
Bullet point? Okay.
Yeah, that, that we have uh, no, not a development agreement. No. I just, this, this is, we, we, we agree that this is how it should be. Now, as long as it's substantially similar to the site plan, to the. The ratios, the parking and that sort, you know, and, and we like the, you know, I think everyone's kind of, you know. Likes the, the direction we're going with the architecture. Um, and those sort of things that we just list out those things that are, you know. Obviously, if we come back and it looks like, you know, a giant banana, then you're like, it doesn't meet the condition we set on you, you know? That it's got this kind of architecture that we're trying to, that we're, we propose, that it's got the, the right ratios. Just something, you know, that we recommend to the city council with these conditions. You know what I mean? And it, and it can be, and it can be the same list and added the, the other things that we've talked about today. You know what I mean? But and then, and a, a fully fleshed out, obviously sewer, water, you know, design and, and fully fleshed out. Uh, elevations and that sort of thing. So.
So I, I gave you that in my comment tonight, Joseph. I gave you exactly that.
What's that?
I said what you presented tonight and then I spelled out, you know, you get your, you know, uh maximum sixty-five units, maximum fourteen thousand four fifty-one. Commercial, um landscaping along the walls will.
Yeah.
I, 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 you're, you're making me repeat what I've already said. Uh, so I'm confused.
Yeah, you know, I'm not, I guess you, you have the motion to, to come up with these. That's, that's what I'm saying is, as long as.
Well, we're not, we're not, yeah, we're not.
We can't do that.
Tonight, but we're giving you a direction. Well, I'm giving you a direction as to what I want to see. And then you can ask each one of the planning commissions. I'm not going to change from what was presented tonight and my statements on record. So.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm, I'm just, if that's what we're trying to do, I want a, a solid list basically is what, is all I'm saying.
So I, I made my comments and that's where I'm at. So you can come back with that for me and I'm going to be happy.
Yeah, that's all I'm looking for. Something like that is, is.
Yeah, for me. Now, you have four other planning commission members and if, you know, they'll have their. Thoughts and then you just take the notes and I think you're, you're doing exactly what we've asked and, and it looks good.
Okay, that, that, that's all I want is just something. So it's not just like another, you know, more, not, we come back in a month and it's just a, a morphist. Whatever. Boom, 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 boom.
Yeah, this is our first time and so that you've presented this plan and, and this looks good. So let's move forward.
I think the only way that will change our minds is if you come back with something different. Cause. Cause I really like, I really like this. Um, honestly, I was dreading this meeting. Um, but I'm happy how it's going. I, I like the designs. I think it's something that. That the, the residents can hopefully like a little more. I mean, there's going to be people who hate whatever you build on that ground.
Right.
But, but I, I do appreciate the, the effort that you and your team made of, of taking our recommendations and implementing. I think this, honestly, I think this is so much better than what you presented before. I like the direction it's going and. I, so there's always going to be, be people who don't like it, but I hope that people will hate it a little less. As far as the residents are concerned.
Right.
But yeah, I, again, I, I appreciate your willingness to, to really take our feedback and incorporate it.
Absolutely. I, I, no, I think the, the project's greatly improved uh with this design. So.
Do we have all the, the commissioners or, or council members' comments and. Agreements that if we, I, I like all the comments from.
Can't do that. I can't tie their hands to say, yep, what we said tonight is it? That's all. I, I'm not going to go down that road.
What do we have? Everybody's comments that.
I, I like, I like that up too. I, 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 I do. I like this up. My only concern is, is parking. I think Fred's kind of helped me understand the formula. Which feels better to me. Um, I, I just, I, I, my only concern, just so you understand, is I don't want that parking to overflow into, into other neighborhoods in.
Yeah, I don't think so.
And that, and, and, and I think the formula, I, I have to go off because I'm not a parking. But, you know, so I, 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 I appreciate that the, the approach we're going with this. I really do. So. Taylor, you want something to say?
Oh, yeah, I was just going to make mention. Uh, we have the development agreement that we have to address. Barry mentioned it. The only thing that comes to mind on that is uh hours of operation. And I, I'm willing to have that conversation when they come back for the preliminary review. Um, or preliminary approval. So I just, I just wanted to put it out there for everybody to consider. Like we, we had limited the hours of operation or we're willing to consider lifting that now based upon the parking availability. Um, I lean towards saying yes, because I'd really like to see some other uses come in there more than just services, like a restaurant. So I, I would just make that comment for the developer to consider.
Okay.
Yeah.
Perfect. Wes, I know you're drinking your fish water, but.
I think they've uh made some uh very good uh changes on this compared to what it was before. And I think uh the. Vast majority of our citizens are going to say it is an improvement. The uh building B and C, the way you've integrated that into the, into the ground. I think is a vast improvement over uh what was not there before. And um, looking at it, the site plan and everything, uh it, it's a vast improvement over what we had before.
Cool. Thanks.
Barry, will you direct with the city staff, um, and the, the rest of the city? Um, the, the forward movement of this, it sounds like the planning commission likes it, um, along with figuring out how to deal with that development agreement.
Absolutely. Be happy to.
All right, Joe, is there anything else?
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. And we, you know, we're, we're going to try to make this the nicest project we can and uh make every, you know. Hope every, most, most people happy, not everybody, right? So.
Very cool.
I think the architecture, we can really make it look nice. So.
I'm, I'm going to ask the planning commission to table this until a date that you guys come up with of, of, when, when you have, you know, all the stuff together.
Yeah, we, we should be able to put, tell Cam or Barry when we think we'd have a. Fully fleshed out plans for you.
Uh, one question I have for Barry, uh, the previous uh plan indicated that uh it would exceed sewer capacity. Uh, can we get a revision on that from the city?
Yes. Yeah, we can get Brandon to address that. It really will not exceed it uh sewer capacity and he can explain that much better than I can.
Okay.
Okay.
And I would recommend if we can get this scheduled at a already scheduled meeting rather than, if possible.
Our next field meeting, um, Joe is October eighth. I can tell you it's a very big schedule.
I don't think we're going to turn it around that fast anyway. So.
Okay, when, when, if, if we wanted to make the eighth, which is a, is a lot, when would we have to get the information to Cam?
Well, the problem is it's got to go out for review, fire department, because this is a completely new project. It's got to go through fire review on, on the site. It, we don't have a choice. It can't match. They can't, um, it's a different project. So that has to go out. So I, I don't know that you can based on timing.
Yeah, I, I don't think we're going to make October at all, but certainly November should be doable.
Leland, what do you think?
I think we're looking at uh two to three weeks for plans that are ready to submit for fire uh engineering and planning review.
And then it's about a two-week process to get the first in because it's, it, because it's a different concept. I know it's the same project, but it is a different concept. They take about fourteen business days, fifteen business days to get the information back once we send the fire out. But I can tell you that the, the rest of the staff can get their reviews done, I'm sure in that time period as well. Um, it just, as long as everything matches code, you wouldn't have a problem. But if you have to make revisions, then you know. It, it's the same basic process you went through. We'll try to get it through as quickly as we can though.
Rob, what's the date of November?
November twelve.
November twelve.
Is it November twelve?
Okay. And then we'd have to have it in by what? The second? Done, I guess, or um.
Probably no later than the first.
But two weeks before that for fire at least, right?
So what we're looking at is, is let's say three weeks to produce a set of plans. Two more weeks for review, one more week to address that review. That's six weeks from now, which is feasible to make the first.
Rob, can I make a suggestion? So during this six-week period, I can see Enrique's frustration and I don't recommend doing that when he comes to council. Um, but uh. If you want to come to council to get I, the council's perspective on your site plan to incorporate things. You're welcome to do that if you really want feedback from the council. So you feel more secure in keeping going down this road. But I'm not willing to give the opinions of each council member. For one item, I know they're still concerned about your parking at one forty-two regardless of the studies or whatever you say. So that's one item. But you, you guys can address that how you want, but that's, that would be just a suggestion if you still have that concerns. Because this is a new set of plans regardless of what you want to say. This is a new set of drawings.
That's, and then what, where, we, we do that in getting on the schedule or in public comment or what?
I would probably get it as a discussion item on the city council agenda.
Okay.
Okay. I, I look for a motion from the planning commission for a table until um uh, Joe notifies us of the day.
Yeah, I think we just plan on that November twelfth date.
I can do that too. Yep. Okay.
Yeah.
So I'll make a motion that we table, what is this thing called? The preliminary site plan and improvement for the lots that dare run until our November twelfth.
There's a second?
Second.
Okay, I?
I, I.
I, I, Taylor? Taylor, oh, there he goes. All right. Thank you. I, 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 I hope, I hope you, Joe, I hope you feel like that this time around, we, we, we. Um, we've been fair and.
Yeah, I think, yeah, yeah. I, um, we'll, we'll get this thing hopefully all drawn up and maybe have a good discussion with the city council and. Uh, have, have something to see in the next few weeks where we can get their input before we, you know, do the entire drawing. So.
Right. Appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Thanks so much.
You bet. Um, does the planning commissioner, uh, any comments? I, I, I can go through each one or you can wait until October.
No comments on this. Uh, just an update for everybody. The uh Northern Utah Trails Association has started uh. Re. Realigning the Weber River downstream from uh Interstate eighty-four. Uh, they're going to be moving the channel of the river uh down into that open area there. And uh do a lot more habitat enhancement out in that area for the fishery.
Wow. I heard they lost a lot of trees.
They what?
I heard they lost a lot of trees across the trail.
They did, they did, but uh they make benches.
Okay, good, um, seeing that the rest of the commission doesn't have any other comments, I'd look for a motion to close it uh to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All right, I'll second it.
One favor say I?
Hi, hi, hi.
Ciao.
All right, yeah, I just have, thank you, everyone, I appreciate your time.
Thank you.